All right, 6:00 PM, calls meeting order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come in and give you guys an update. We did, I think, maybe two or three months ago, gave an update, but we've had a lot of work going on behind the scenes since then. And we've fully developed the scope and some other things. We're going to be going out for the vote like we're going to be talking about. So we just wanted to run through some of those items and give you guys an update. So just a quick, who's here? I'm Mike McCarthy with Young and Right. I'm one of the project managers.
Well, my name is Victoria. I'm also from Young and Right. I'm project architect.
Sarah Wilder with Campus on the project manager.
Hi, I'm David Vauder. I'm the Senior Project Manager with Campus Construction.
So I'm gonna jump right into the schedule. So at the next board meeting, you guys will adopt the resolution. And then our vote day right now is December 17th, which coincides with the concert here. Design process will begin as long as the project passes. That's about a year, and then we'll submit to SED, which right now review time is at eight to nine months, but hopefully that shortens. Bit periods about two months, and then we'll have construction in the summer of '27 and '28, just like the last project, and we'll close out in December of '28.
So now what the project actually entails and what we've kind of been working on behind the scenes. So like Mr. Sartisio was talking about, at the last project, we started at around $55 million. Had to get it down to an amount, within a specific amount. Since then, there have been some updates at SED as far as air conditioning and some other things that we've been trying to work in as well. So we wanted to run through just the list of items that have been set. So what it comes down to too is when the vote does come out, it's going to be two propositions. So with the first proposition, the scope?
Yeah, so for the first proposition, the scope is for elementary school roof replacement or GLP parking lot replacement or replacement ventilation update, pre-K room renovation, and for middle high school roof replacement and parking lot and sidewalk replacement.
Then for the Prop Two, at the elementary school, it's going to be classroom renovation. So it's a continuation of a kind of what was done last time, which you guys are aware of. Sidewalk replacements outside at the middle high school, it's going to be the odd foyer outside, which many of us walked through, the auditorium itself, which includes the stage and then some finish upgrades, the main office and guidance office, some updates there, sidewalk replacement, and baseball scoreboard replacement. And then overall throughout the district, it's going to be some select AC upgrades. So basically what that means is we're going to be taking a look at some of the needs of the district, some of the hotter rooms, some of the spaces, what makes sense, and how much can get done as far as air conditioning in those spaces.
So let's stay on that slide for a second, please. Could you go back for me, please? And I'll talk about the next slide as well. Proposition one, and you'll see this in a slide in a little bit, this is really all infrastructure work. And we all know, because we're here, that we continue to have an issue with the roof at Eden Elementary. And that is, it's either out of warranty or soon to be out of warranty, as is the roof on this building here. You clearly have to have roofs before you have nice things inside your buildings, right? The GLP parking lot is in that smaller, there's the photo on the right, that clearly is near its end of life. Interestingly, the door replacement and ventilation updates at GLP, that was actually slated two projects ago, and we've kept pushing that down the road. It really does need to get done. And obviously, you know, continuing in the parking lot and sidewalk replacement at this building as well. Primarily the parking lot right outside in the auditorium, which obviously gets a lot of use. Proposition one, 19.3 million. We'll see in a second what if any tax impact that would have. To talk a little bit more about Proposition Two, we did some extensive and really fantastic work at the Eden Elementary building in terms of the classroom renovations. We were able to renovate eight classrooms, and we need to continue that work so that all students that experience our elementary building have that same great learning environments. We were able to replace a lot of sidewalks at the elementary building, and that just really shines a light on those that we were not able to replace. Hence, that's why that's on Prop Two. The odd foyer stage and odd finish upgrades, I kind of lumped those all together because that's really one giant space both inside the auditorium and outside. A very, very much-used component of this district that is really in need of a refresh and an update. And I would say the same thing about the main office and the guidance office here. It's a high-traffic areas, and both are really, I think, original to the building. Sidewalks, obviously. The idea behind the baseball scoreboard is we just installed a really beautiful softball scoreboard. We have a baseball scoreboard currently, but it's outdated, and it's time to update it and rededicate it to whoever that scoreboard is dedicated to. And also, when it says select AC upgrades, this board has heard from me previously about some potential new state mandates about heat mitigation. We have looked at air conditioning across the district. The cost to do so is astronomical, to the point where I won't even bring up the number because it would never see the light of day. But we do have a responsibility to address our hotspots in the area, our hottest classrooms, and that's why you see kind of a less-specific component on this Proposition Two and select AC upgrades. Because we need to determine exactly where those places are before we can determine what the cost is. So that's a hope in Proposition Two. You can go forward for me? I'm going to take this one as well, okay? So Proposition One, $19.3 million, zero percent local taxpayer impact. No changes to taxes for Proposition One. That's a standalone proposition. It can pass on its own. We are maximizing the district aid ratio of 78.2%. That means for every hundred dollars we spend, we get $78.20 back. That's a pretty good investment. Because of the fiscal responsibility of this board, we are able to earmark three-point, just over $3.5 million from the Capital Reserve Fund to keep the tax impact at zero. And I commend this board for earlier this year approving the creation of a new capital reserve. That's where a good portion of this money is coming from, is that reserve that you approved earlier this year. Again, this is an infrastructure proposition, and it replaces items that are out of warranty. Proposition number two, $10.7 million. This is not a standalone proposition. Proposition Two cannot pass if Proposition One doesn't pass. So if people say no on Prop One, then it's no on Prop Two. If they say yes on Prop One and no on Prop Two, we have half a project. Again, utilizing the district aid ratio of 78.2%, this proposition for $10.7 million would require a tax impact of 1.96%. That averages out to about $56 per $100,000 of assessed value. Any questions right now about the financial implications from the board?
I just had one question. I thought that there were still issues regarding the roof?
There are, and that's why, and there are still issues with the roof. There are, we are still working with with our insurance company as well. But at this point, we have to plan to replace it. And we have to plan that via a capital project.
Yeah, no, it should be in it, but hopefully we're going to prevail on that issue.
Well, but it's only a portion of the roof, too, Alan, that the insurance is addressing. We're addressing the whole entire roof on the building.
Just to clarify, too, with the warranties on the roof, '27 is when those warranties are up at this building and at the elementary school.
So right about when construction will start?
Exactly.
Will be out of warranty. Okay, thank you. You can advance, please.
So we just wanted to show you guys some images of some potential ideas that could be done. And this one is the elementary school classrooms, and this is just a continuation of that work like we talked about. Top right corner is the existing classrooms, top or the left side of the page is what the new classrooms are that were done in the last project. So just a reminder of that. You can go ahead, Brandon. It's another one, and then you can flip to the next one. Sure. And then this one here is the nursery school classrooms at the GLP building. So these two are the two existing ones. Those are kind of on the end now where the kids get picked up. Next slide is another potential classroom idea, and this is just some new, fresh classrooms, new finishes, lots of storage, bright colors, all that good stuff. And at this point, all of these are just potential ideas for that.
Okay, so this slide shows the existing foyer. As you can see, it's also pretty heavily worn. Old ceiling, old wood. And in this slide, it's a potential look, the concept of how it could look. We modified a little bit the use of it, so we added some seats, we added some coffee tables. So it's more like lounge area now. But obviously, this is just the concept. And also, I personally wanted to save the wood-looking, existing panels. So I modified it, and you can see it on the ceiling. So yeah.
All right, and then the auditorium. Again, you guys familiar with this space? So you can see the old teal seats, the brown, which doesn't necessarily fit school colors. And we've obviously been doing a lot of renovations. Here's some concept renderings as well, new seats, new finishes, upgraded wood, and sound panels in the space as well. And those are the slides. And basically, what that would entail, when you say, when we say concept renderings, what does that mean? Is hopefully, once the project passes, we get with the district, we meet with them, and then we fully understand what you guys want. So for now, we came up with some concepts ourselves for the vestibule area. We know you would want to still use it for votes. You guys do art shows out there, you're selling motorcycles. We got all sorts of stuff. We want to make sure it's still a flexible space, but we'd want to meet with you guys first and determine what that really means. So these, again, just concept renderings of things that it could be in the future. And of course, we're open to any questions. There's a couple of renderings here that, you know, they might play. I know you guys have seen them before, but it kind of spins around the space and shows some ideas.
And Mike, that's all movable furniture is, essentially what we're thinking. So it's not like it's going to be built in and...
Right. The only thing that we're showing here, like those stairs and those built-in steps on the side, it's kind of like what's over there in that cubby in the far left. You know, something similar to that. But, you know, again, that's what we would work with you guys to determine if that even makes sense for you, or if it needs to all be movable type of things.
Jen, do you see any corn in the videos?
The message has been delivered. The message has been delivered. I promise the message has been delivered. Thank you. Any questions from the board? So once again, Mike, you said that the October meeting, there'll be a resolution for the board to adopt this project going forward?
Correct.
And then we'll have some responsibility to advertise and make sure the voting public is aware?
November 1st.
November?
November 1st is when we would have to advertise.
Yeah, what, 45 days in advance?
Thank you, Dave. Any questions? Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Audit presentation.
We got it, right? Yeah.
All right, can everyone hear me? Okay. Okay, thanks for having me. So my name is Nick Petronic with Drescher-Malachi. We are the external auditors for the school district. And I'm here to present on the results of the 2024 audit. So we come in and around, we do our fieldwork in August of every year, and now we're at the point where we're kind of wrapping things up. We have a draft report available for the district, and then we do this presentation. So that's kind of in the line of things and where we stand right now. As far as our audit goes, we will issue basic financial statements for the district. For fiscal year ending June 30, 2024, we are issuing an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. So that's a clean opinion. That's what the district wants, and that's the best that you can do. There's also an opinion related to the federal awards. And there's no non-compliance there, no question costs. So a clean opinion there as well, and there's no findings district-wide. So overall, a very clean audit, and that's what you strive for as a district. Also, as part of our audit, we'll issue a management letter. That's more so just a communication from us to you as far as any recommendations or observations of best practices that we have. And then we'll also speak on any future accounting standards that might affect the district. And then from an auditor communication standpoint, we're required to communicate to you a few items. Our responsibility is to plan and perform an audit to make sure that our opinion that is given on your district and your financial statements is fairly stated, and that can be relied upon by third parties or by users who make decisions on behalf of the district. And then last but not least, we will issue a report covering your extra classroom funds. And I'm happy to report there's no non-compliance or no findings or issues there as well. So overall, a very clean audit for the district. On the next page there, we'll kind of go into some of the numbers for the general fund. This is kind of a five-year trend of where the district has been. This is the third straight year where you see that blue line exceeds the red line. So that's your revenues exceeding your expenditures. At June 30, 2024, total revenues for the general fund came in at about $34.3 million. Expenditures came in at about $33.8 million. So overall, that was a positive change in fund balance of almost $600,000. Your major revenues are your real property taxes and sales tax. Sales tax came in at about $2.1 million. There's also quite a spike in interest earnings this year. They'd almost doubled from the prior year to up almost $750,000. State aid also increased as well. And then on the expenditure side of things, you kind of have a consistent growth upwards. That's kind of a normal trend we're seeing across all of our districts. Salaries and benefits are increasing. And then this was actually the first year the district had a payment due on the 2022 bond that was issued a couple of years ago. So there's a spike in principal payments as well. So that overall positive change in fund balance is reflected on the next page. So the current status of fund balance in the general fund, right now, you're at about $17.1 million in total fund balance. So a portion of that is restricted. The majority of that restricted fund balance, which means they're in legal reserves, a lot of that is in your capital reserves. So that's about $6 million. And then you also have 2.3 million in your retirement reserves, and then 1.4 million in your employee benefit reserves. So that's money that's legally set aside and is not available fund balance currently at the moment. And then also, you have about 5.8 million in unrestricted fund balance, which we kind of get into on the next slide. So here, we show of that 5.8 million that's unrestricted, you still have a portion of that that's assigned or earmarked for certain items. So 1.1 of that is upcoming purchases that the district knows are going to be on the hook for. And then you also appropriated about $3.1 million in your 2024-25 budget. So that money is technically unrestricted, but it's still assigned for certain purposes. And then you have about $1.5 million left over that is truly your unassigned or available fund balance at June 30, 2024. And then on the last page here, this is kind of just showing the 4% real property tax calculation that the district's required to be in compliance with. If they were not in compliance, we'd be required to disclose a finding in our report. But the district is in compliance, and it has been for the last several years. And right now, your unassigned fund balance, as I mentioned before, is at about $1.5 million at June 30, 2024. So yeah, overall, on the last page there, it's just our contact information. If you have any questions after this meeting, feel free to reach out to myself or Charles. Overall, it's a very clean audit. It's always great working with the district, and everything operated very smooth, and we received full cooperation from everyone. So overall, it went very well from our perspective. So if there's any questions, feel free to jump in.
Thank you.
Are there any requests to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved?
Yep.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is the time for public comments. Do I need to read all that? Any comments? Okay, moving on. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of teacher aide Susan Walzak be accepted effective August 30, 2024. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Walzak for her six years of service to the district.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of senior clerk typist Megan Picrillo be accepted effective September 6, 2024. The board administration wished to thank Mrs. Picrillo for her four years of service to the district.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Kendall Burdarni be permanently appointed as a special education ordnarity, be permanently appointed as a special education teacher effective October 16, 2024.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Jessica Johnson be granted 10-year as an elementary teacher effective October 11, 2024.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried. Congratulations.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Patty Dallas be permanently appointed as a cafeteria monitor effective October 13, 2024.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Billy Beck be appointed on probation as a senior clerk typist effective September 19, 2024, and ending March 18, 2025. Salary is based upon CSEA contract, level six, step four.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following books be declared access and disposed of as of the district deems appropriate.
Second?
Okay.
Can I, second?
Okay, I gotta read.
Oh, you do?
Making Music Purple Level, 30 copies. Making Music Green Level, 29 copies. Making Music Orange Level, 29 copies. Making Music Red Level, 27 copies. Inside Out and Back Again, four copies. Unbroken, three copies. How to Drive, the Beginner Driver's Manual, four copies. I Ready Teacher Manual, kindergarten, six copies. I Ready Teacher Manual, grades one through five, six copies.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the New York State Deferred Compensation Plan be approved?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the safety plan be approved?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following vehicles be declared access and disposed of of the district deems appropriate. A 1998 Chevy pickup with the VIN number stated, and 2016 International School Bus with that VIN number stated.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the transportation route spreadsheet be approved?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following transportation billing rates be approved for use throughout the 2024-2025 school year. Bus driver rate, $35.55 per hour. Bus attendant rate, $29.4 cents per hour. Mileage rate, $2.24 per mile.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the bid for mechanical service provider for sectional boiler repair be awarded to Mullenberg Benz in the amount of $14,825. In addition, alternates for sectional replacement depended upon findings after disassembly in the price of intermediate section, $3,980, front section, $4,345, and/or rear section, $4,345.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education authorized the transfer of the 2023-2024 unassigned fund balance into the following reserves as of June 30, 2024. Retirement Contribution Reserve, $50,000. Retirement Contribution Reserve, TRS, $150,000. Capital Reserve Building, $1,200,000. Capital Reserve Vehicle/Bus, $35,287.
Second?
Any discussion? Frankie, can I just confirm with everything? So the 1.2 that we're adding to the Capital Reserve was shown in the 3.5 number that was on the budget, capital project budget vote up there, so.
Yep.
Seeing what we're seeing right here, that $1.2 million transfer is now earmarked for that project there. So just to give everybody a heads up what's kind of going on here. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the external audit report prepared by Drescher-Malachi be approved?
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the safety committee members be approved as follows. Jeffrey Sartisio, Superintendent. Mike Sitzman, Director of Facilities. Brandon Watson, Director of Technology. Lauren Carter, Principal Primary. Kelly LaRosa, Principal Elementary. Bill McDonough, Principal Secondary. Jeff Servoni, Principal Secondary. Linda Schwanz, GLP CRT Member. Christine McTagg, EE Teacher CRT Member. Brian Smith, Middle School, High School Teacher CRT Member. Darren Azarella, CSEA. Christina Karstedt, Parent PTA. Brian Bergstaller, SRO. Elaine Funk, Teacher Aide. Kristy Height, Special Ed Representative. Mary Banco, Transportation. Allison McKenzie, CSEA. Patty Dallas, CSEA. Jason Iwanko, Admin Athletic Director. Francis May, Admin Business Office.
Second? Second.
Any discussion?
I just want the board to be aware, there likely will be two additions to that team. Um, the, the regulations which were recently updated um, require a driver and an aide. Is that right, Mike? Oh, they are in there? Forget it.
I was gonna say, I know Allison McKenzie is a driver.
I was looking for, I was looking for driver, not the, not the unit.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report?
Okay, so I think we've talked about this a lot tonight, but just um, do want to reiterate, reiterate that we finalized the external audit report as Nick had presented today from Drescher Malaki. Um, and that report did yield about a one point four million dollar surplus of funds over and above the on our the fund balance limit of four percent. Um, so we were able to stockpile some of that money into reserves. One point two of it going into our capital reserve, which will offset the upcoming capital projects. So we are able to get additional work done in that Proposition One and keeping it at tax neutral. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is community eligibility provision. So we have seen now that students get a free breakfast and a free lunch. Um, pretty significant increases in participation district wide, which is great to see. Um, so I just want to make uh, the point that make sure that everyone is filling out the, those household income verification forms. Those do impact the district, state and federal aid. It also would impact families to receive additional benefits such as um, reduced A P exam fees, reduce S A T fees. Um, so just make sure that one per household is filled out and completed and sent into the district.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thanks. Just a few things. Um, first off, Don and Frankie and I had a meeting last Thursday with the representatives from the Comptroller's Office. They are the, the group that was doing the audit on our capital project. Um, we had probably an hour long meeting where we discussed their initial report, shared some of our concerns with, with some of the items in that report. And um, the way they left it is we would have an updated report either Friday or Monday of this week. Uh, as of this moment, we do not have that updated report. Uh, we will make contact tomorrow because our response is due to them on September twenty fifth. And we will have a, a response, um, just clarifying some of the, the concerns that they had, which were quite frankly, minor and they did offer us a, a couple of suggestions that we will absolutely um, um, put forward in when the next project uh, um, rolls, rolls forward. Um, in addition to that, um, Brandon, can you open that site for me? So up on the screen and, and on your screens, and I'm, I'm going to go through my own version here is um, the June twenty twenty four meeting of the Board of Regents where they talked about New York State Graduation Measures Initiative. Uh, you may have heard about the Blue Ribbon Committee. And, and that's been a committee that's uh, taken a deep dive uh, to look at uh, graduation requirements in our state. Uh, I'm going to flip forward to um, slide number three, please. Actually, you're there. And one of their, one of their first transformations is, is to develop and adopt the New York State Portrait of a Graduate. Uh, Portrait of a Graduate is, that's not something new. Uh, it's actually worked with some other districts, including one I've been involved with previously. I've taken a look at and, and what that portrait is is where at this, in this case, the state and then, and then schools decide what they want their graduates to look like. And, and what, what they're able to do, what they're, what they're, what they know, what they're able to demonstrate and how they're able to demonstrate it. Um, so go forward to slide five for me, please. I- in this case, the uh, the Blue Ribbon Committee i- is settled on a portrait of, of a graduate that includes critical thinking, innovative problem solving, literacy across content areas, cultural competence, social emotional competence, communication skills and global citizenship. Um, that's kind of the, the thirty thousand view of what, of what they want a New York State graduate to look like. Um, and, and then they get a little bit deeper, you can go forward one slide for me, into some other things that they, they want to talk about. And transformation number two, redefine credits. Organize diploma requirements by the components that I just reviewed. Um, add new requirements for C T E and financial literacy. Which you've been hanging your hat on for a while, right?
So Adulting one oh one?
Yeah, that could be part of it. Uh, but the, the, the most interesting bullet on this slide for me is expand ways for students to show evidence of proficiency and the learning standards and the components of the Portrait of a Graduate. We're very assessment heavy in our state. And, and as we go through these slides a little bit more, you're going to hear some, some very different ideas. Go forward for me. Okay, so expanding learning experiences and, and this is not only expanding learning, learning experiences, but expanding the pathways to students to demonstrate their learning experiences. The one that I honed in on immediately was, was top center capstone learning experiences. Ca- a capstone is something that happens at the end. You know, if you're, if you're building a um, a pyramid, you, you put the lot, you put the, the, the cap on the pyramid at the end. And if graduation is, is, is uh, is similar to that, uh, that comparison, then the capstone would be what you do at the end of your, your schooling career and your, and your twelfth year. Hopefully, it would be a, a, a project uh, over time. You know, something that perhaps is started as, as young as uh, the middle level and continues and builds in, until graduation. Um, kind of a neat concept. So go forward one more slide. This one's titled Multiple Means of Demonstrating Student Proficiency. And you have two students here who graduated, but they, they demonstrated their proficiency in different ways. And the student, the, the, the student in the gray sweatshirt earned the seal of biliteracy. He clearly focused on uh, um, world languages, completed a capstone project and completed English composition courses where, where the other student um, was more involved in, in the arts in terms of digital media and communications through uh, C T E uh, program. Passed the state exam, okay, passed the state exam, remember I said that as we move forward? And completed a summer internship, some more real world, hands-on uh, type experiences. Um, tran- transformation number three, which is the next slide, Brandon. Sunset Diploma Assessment Requirements. No more exams. Right? That's how I read it the first time I read it. And then I went a little bit deeper because I kind of shook, I kind of shook a little bit. Because it says students will no longer need to pass the Regents or a plus one pathway assessment to graduate. State assessments will continue to be administered per federal S A requirements. We are required to, to assess our students in order to receive federal funds. That's not going to go away. But I want, I, but, but if you only looked at this slide and only looked at the words and didn't have the background knowledge that I have, we no longer need, need to pass. But you still can, okay? The, the assessment option is not going away. But there will be other pathways other than simply uh, demonstrating uh, proficiency on a Regents exam. The next, the next component is they, you know, a number of years ago, um, different diploma options were added. And it came, it became quite back in my counseling days, it be- became pretty intricate trying to determine what path, what students were on. How many assessments they needed, how many math classes were science classes? If they didn't take uh, you know, a third or a fourth year of, of foreign language, was there another, another option for them? Uh, and this transformation would be one diploma, but there would be right, uh, an ability to recognize uh, different experiences and different levels of, of student demonstrated expertise through, through seals and endorsements. So one diploma. Um, move on to slide number twelve for me. This gives a nice, nice comparison to our current model versus the, the proposed transformational model. Currently, we have three diplomas. Again, we've moved to one diploma. Uh, twofold system, meaning not only cre- credits that students need to earn a number of credits, but they have to, uh, they have assessment requirements. Where in the, the new model, and again, and this is all still in the discussion stages, there will be a multiple means for demonstrating proficiency and it would eliminate the assessment requirement. And we still could have students demonstrate that proficiency through those assessments. Uh, currently districts and I, you know, while we, I believe we do require, I'm not, I'm going to back off of that because I may have my, I may have my districts mixed up. Um, currently districts can add, add requirements locally. That option would be eliminated uh, and, and the new model. Um, this is their, this is their kind of to-do list, adopt the New York State Portrait of a Graduate, redefine credits and expand learning experiences, sunset diploma assessment requirements as we talked about, and move to one diploma. Um, so the Blue Ribbon Commission, that's what B R C stands for, ambassador forums are ongoing. There is a Zoom option tomorrow night. Um, the hours uh, um, elude me at this point, but I know we did put out a communication yesterday. And six to eight, is that what?
I think, I think that's what I saw.
Um, and you know, that's the opportunity for the community to listen and, and provide feedback. And the option, the opportunity for feedback will continue through October. And once that is, is uh, received and digested, then in November, the full plan will be presented to the Board of Regents um, and for their, for their discussion and further development. Okay? So questions from the board on these potential changes to graduation requirements?
Brandon, go back to fourteen, or slide twelve, please. All right. Proposed transformable model. To me, that's saying, all right, what other classes are we going to offer and how are we going to instruct those classes? You know, I'm, I'm just, I'm just thinking in my, my head, the big picture of there's a bunch of different ways now to get a diploma and now do we have to offer all these transformable models to get there? And if so, how are we doing that?
That's why this isn't going to happen overnight. Okay, this is a, this is a long, this is a long range plan. Um, I think what you would see though is i- i- you think about some of the unique coursework that we, that we offer here.
I, I agree.
You know, they, they cap, they look at the, what the, what the Chopper Club does. That to me is an absolute capstone type project. You know, they, they, they take it from the, from the bolts all the way to a finished product that, that, that's just an amazing work. Um, so I, I think what you would see is some of those more experiential type courses have, have greater weight than what they had under the previous system.
Okay, I, I, I'm just, I'm just looking at, this can get so broad um, in, in what's out there. And it's just like, how do you have the staffing, the, the building size to, to handle it all if, if it comes? And that, it kind of comes back to some of the conversations that we've had in the past about distance learning for all intents and purposes, if you want to call it that, and how you match that up. I mean, I, I don't see how one district could tackle this all. I mean, it'd have to be, you know, like almost all of B O Cs, almost all of Western New York to, to start to tackle some of this stuff, but that's.
Well, it's an interesting concept and I wasn't gonna, I, I thought about talking about this tonight, I wasn't going to, but now I am. Um, because uh, you know, concurrently, uh, there is a, um, there's a requirement now for districts through the leadership of, of the different B O Cs, the thirty seven, thirty seven B O Cs across the state to now, now be discussing regionalization. And how we can maximize learning opportunities for students by working together. And we, our first step is where we are required to complete a, in a, a, a local assessment, there's that word again, about our strengths and needs and uh, submit that to the state by November first. Uh, Dr. Awark for Area Two will be, be leading discussions uh, through different work groups about um, you know, bringing districts together. So to, to answer to, to your point. So that if we have an outstanding technology department, and we do, and, and our neighbor doesn't have the ability, doesn't have the infrastructure, doesn't, can't find a teacher to teach technology, can we work together so that, you know, other students ha- have, have the same or similar experiences? Um, and that, that's just, you know, one example, so.
Okay.
Any other questions about this uh, transformational work? Okay, so two other things in, in, in part uh, that I want to report to you is our, uh, our website went, uh, went through another uh, update. Um, more of a necessity because of change in, a required change in platform. But also, uh, we've taken that opportunity to further clean up the website and make it much more user friendly. Uh, we are um, working through a transition to our teacher webpages. Uh, Carrie Reinhardt, she's our PR specialist through B O Cs, has transferred over all the, all the teacher webpages from our previous platform. However, uh, the new platform is going to require us to, to provide some training and an easier means for teachers to update their new pages. So, you know, please bear with us as, as uh, we work through uh, the nuances of uh, of making those changes. And the other, the last thing I want to say is I just want to thank everyone involved in the district from our facilities department to our transportation department, our, our, our teachers, our administrators, everyone involved. It has really been an outstanding opening to school. Um, we've gotten students home on time, almost, almost on time right from the first day, even though that we've got some pretty major construction going on in sixty-two. Students are back. I can tell you this library has been teaming with stu- with, with students uh, throughout the day and that's wonderful. That's why, that's why we built this space. Uh, it's, it's really been a, a, a great beginning to the school year, so thank you. Any questions for me?
I don't see a student for the student report. Any students want to give a report? No?
Sure, come on. Isn't like homecoming coming up here in a week or so?
Uh, board report? Roundtable?
No, just uh, just a lot of work's been put in on this capital project and it's, it's nice to see it come to fruition and I know there's going to be some more conversations, but just remember, we're planning all the way out to twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight and we're taking current costs right now. And there's some very specific words in there in regards to select air conditioning areas and we're, we're still examining all this as it um, unfolds. So uh, you know, just a couple of things, you know, kind of staring us in the eye right now is this, this possible heat mitigation within the buildings and then electric buses. So um, couple of challenges that we're going to have between now and the, the next capital project. Uh, so we only can plan to where we're at right now, so. That's all I've got.
Classrooms look amazing. My daughter has um, in a classroom that my one son had three years ago and it's totally renovated. And it's amazing because he had a classroom I had thirty years ago. So it's, it's really, it's, it's great.
The next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, October sixteen, twenty twenty four at six P M. in the middle high school library. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming, everybody.